Oh, it's the same one, right? There's not a, okay. Even though it says the, okay. Yeah, no, I did. And then I thought maybe I clicked on.
And stay out of my breath. Sorry. And he had long, yeah, like a panel long hair. And came in with like a rainbow shirt on. He had stuff all night. I forgot, I forgot to come here for the last one. Who's the? He's got. Oh, it's James.
I'm on if you wanna.
Okay.
He was called, he was like twenty eight, twenty nine.
I don't know, but I don't know.
So from what your panel is.
Yes.
I think he's like twenty or twenty nine. He was probably a class of fourteen or fifteen.
And then I can shut that video off, right? I don't think it's good.
Correct.
Cause it will come.
Perfect. Perfect. You have to, if anyone's there.
Yep.
They lose their head.
Yep. Got it.
Yeah.
Yes, it's just.
Yes, uh, she was. She does, she said she would be in the board, but she had like somebody on her. I suggest your conference before your conference. So she said she might do that momentarily. I probably want to set this up.
Um, if we end up getting to this school committee portion quicker, then I will just go out of agenda order for the workshop.
Okay.
So that he stays where we're at.
Sure.
Let's work around him.
Excellent.
We have Doogie Howser, customer. Really excited.
Me and Magic.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yes.
So is he a big gambler?
No, um, but he does.
He's a magic.
He does our like responsible gaming ads.
Some of them.
And it's. I've not. So he's like.
Yeah.
Say Doogie Howser, how?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Yes, that's why it always run for him.
Or Bernie.
I know, I didn't watch that show, but.
Oh, really?
Uh-uh. Good one. So I always think, well, the stupid cows are there.
Yeah, I'm like super into magic. You should ask him to do a trick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do not know that.
He's in like, like whatever, there's like some. I wanna call it like a magic fraternity in LA that you have to like apply to.
It's like a very big deal.
Yep. And he needs.
I saw that on MTV two or whatever, wherever you saw that.
Like not a, not a sports person.
Like the LA.
Usually get sports.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. So you're going to see him.
It's gonna be at our New York office, so. So I often have to go around here. It's cause my boss is like interviewing him, but I was.
Well, you're not a host on. Am I being? You make you a host? I don't know if you need Carlos a host.
Um, I'm invited as an alternate host. What do you need to do?
So maybe start it and add Carlos as a host. Right? Cause you're not a host, right?
No.
Now.
My host?
That must be one of them.
All right, so now. Don't do that. You're seeking Carlos.
Yep.
Yep.
It's not going well. That's not me though, right?
I think I saw that one. Yeah, that's on the list one. Well, is that right? Yeah.
I'm muted, dude. It's not me.
I muted that one. Oh, you're not doing. It just felt that I did.
Learning with you.
Um, it's probably one. She's six eight.
Where is anywhere?
Yeah. Nothing I need to do.
Well. Where?
Anyway.
That's amazing.
Yeah, I'm excited. Fourteen days.
Um, anyone else?
He says he's a host. Okay, Carl, you're a host.
This one. And.
Good. Right. Um, let's see. Plug it up. Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Okay, you guys ready? If you'll carry a couple minutes. Yeah. All right. Um. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order with a roll call of school committee members. Michelle Kirk, the president.
Diana Frashella, here.
Earl Horn here.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to open public comment. Members of the public are welcome to comment during the public input interview or through Zoom. You're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment and that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. And whether you're here in person or on Zoom, please state your name and address for the record. Okay, so we have. Some are raising their hand. So now how? All right, figure this out. Can you bring them over?
Yes, to bring them over. Yeah, so, okay. I don't speak how I can.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi there, yeah. Sorry, I have. Both my phone and my computer on, so I'm gonna disconnect my phone. Um, Chris Potts, Seven Curve Street, can you hear me okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Great, thanks. So I know you're not gonna be taking public comment when you get to this topic, so I wanted to make sure to, um, just share a couple thoughts regarding, um, potential fee discussion. Um, I just wanna ensure that the school committee looks back at previous, um, discussions that took place, um, especially in two thousand twenty-three, where, um, it was promised that school committee would get certain types of reports, um, regarding bus fees before this was taken into consideration again. Um, it was noted that the seven to grade seven to twelve busing could generate an estimated hundred and twelve thousand dollars in bus fees, um, which would cut the increase in transportation in half. That elementary busing is, is especially tricky, that we need to look more closely at how many, how many locations would need busing based on distance and how many families would have more than one child going to different schools. Um, the agreement was in terms of next step, that there would be closer, i.e. better revenue projections for elementary students' transportation, that there would be scenarios run based on student proximity to schools and that there would be, um, and, uh, an active effort to get public feedback, feedback to give the community the chance to talk about bus fees, to weigh in, to learn about the reasons why. So, you know, tonight, since this is gonna be a topic of discussion, I'm really hoping that information, this information that was promised to be delivered to school committee in two thousand twenty-three is actually brought forth tonight as part of the discussion because I think the data is incredibly important for the school committee to consider um, as it discusses this, this, the fee, has the fee discussion going forward. I also, um, would be remiss in, in not noting that, um, you know, if you look at a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in bus fees, that seemed to be important to school committee. Um, if we had school choice, that would equate to twenty-three school choice seats. Um, so I just, you know, I, there's always these comparisons that are made to, you know, pest control and, you know, a joke about, you know, me not understanding revenue. Well, again, twenty-three choose school choice seats is equates to a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in bus fees that would be saved. So if a hundred and twelve thousand dollars is important to school committee, then, you know, we do need to look at a whole range of different ways, um, that the school, uh, could look at various revenue generators and not automatically discount, um, ideas that are put forth on the table, um, with false information. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Um, anybody else online? Oh, okay. At this time, I will close public comment. Welcome, Sophia.
Thanks.
All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. And as we, we heard, uh. Yeah, so I can load it down. Okay, uh, for consent agenda tonight, we have, um, the approval of the June fifth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes um, and donations in the amount of two thousand from the Wheelock PTO to be paid directly to Connolly Bus for bus transportation for the grade two field trip to the Franklin Park Zoo. Um, does anyone have any edits or corrections or want anything removed from the consent agenda? Good. Do you hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated? Come on. Okay. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Um, at this time, we'll move on to new business, um, and I'll pass it over to Dr. Marsden for the strategic plan progress update.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. As you saw in your narrative, um, this is the final report for this full year. We did the initial, uh, focus areas on September ninth meeting. And there's an update on the February thirteenth meeting, and this will be the, the, uh, end of the year update, and then we'll do the same process as we did um, the previous years, we, over the summer, look at uh, our strategic plan to decide what we're gonna be looking at, what our areas of focus are. Present to you again in September, I do give us guidance, whether that's good or you'd like us to change our direction and then continue with the, the cadence of three towns a year. So, um, I'm not gonna go through every single part of it because it is lengthy. However, I did highlight some on my copy just to kinda review. That may be different from what we did in February. But gonna give you an update on where we are. So our first priority area was safety and belonging. And one of the areas was evaluate the current practices to support student staff well-being. And again, we, we went back and, and looked at the Metro West Health results. Uh, the survey results, reviewed them with staff and adjusted the wellness curriculum as we needed to. Um, and then we're still doing the end of the term Google form reflections for students. And then, um, signed to suicide presentation and inventory was done in January. And then our K to twelve research and development plan for the summer for Wayfinder, uh, launch in two thousand twenty-five. So Wayfinder is an SEL program that will be doing, uh, K to twelve, which you'll see throughout this, um, this document, and you'll get a presentation in August on the program itself. Michelle and I have already talked about that. Um, promoting a sense of belonging, uh, we see some areas there. One of the things I wanna highlight is that we hosted the five town Special Olympics in Maine, which was a really awesome event for everyone. Uh, we've done professionally, excuse me, culture response and professional development, uh, DLD. Uh, we also did some, some work on that, uh, in February at the high school with practice and family engagement. Um, and then we did some, uh, student counts of Google form feedback at the high school level. We get open to all students, they got feedback from students to get a sense of what they, um, you know, what they're looking at and what they feel as far as belonging. So that was really powerful. Um, foster opportunities for students to explore all paths after high school. I do wanna highlight, we had a hundred and four students this year participating in senior projects, which is the highest we've had, which was incredible projects. I know we didn't do a presentation this school committee this year. We'll make sure we do that next year, so you get to see some of the great stuff that's going on. Um, aligning our DEI efforts, uh, one of the things that we will, we'll talk about in the fall is the cost of the medfield experience. We've been get gathering this data all year on what it costs in additional to parents for the medfield experience, whether it's, um, extracurriculars, sports, uh, trips, all those kinds of things. And I know that we get a lot of help from our PTOs and MCPD, but it still costs parents a lot. So we're gonna talk a little bit about that um, as we get into the fall, we'll kinda explain that and what some of the areas that we wanna look at to try to reduce those costs. Um, the summer research and development, uh, to look for holes in the social studies, uh, standards, to see where we need to improve those efforts. Um, and then we did, uh, Brenda Hagan did a presentation to the PTO in the fall coaches this, this spring, looking at cost and equity around, um, some of the, the sports and so what it. We had one data point that said, um, if you are a child, if, if a female child plays three sports in medfield, potentially you could spend additional fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars a year on extra stuff. You know, bags, sweatshirts, dinners, all that kinda thing. So we just wanted to bring, bring that to the surface a little bit, have conversations about it and try to make sure that we're not, uh, taxing some families that really just can't, can't afford that. Um, school safety in addition to what we've done in the past, uh, in the beginning of the year, um, development of the threat assessment team. We've had trains at all schools and continue the town safety committee, which we have a new chief, fire chief now, so we'll be doing that as well. Um, restorative practices was an area that we wanted to focus on. So we've referred some students at the high school level to, uh, the DA's good decisions class as an alternative to disciplinary action. And, uh, Blake Middle School is working with their counselors to do interventions that they can use instead of just traditional, uh, disciplinary action. School start time, which was a big one for us, took a lot of our time this year. You know, we impact bargain and plan for adjustments for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We've adjusted the master schedules at both Blake and the high school, developed an extended day program for elementary that's, um, gonna be from two forty to four o'clock. Um, Kids Barrow is developing a morning program for Blake, and we've adjusted the high school clubs to three forty-five. That used to happen right after school, uh, but now they're gonna be at three forty-five. So we wanted make sure that teachers had time to meet after school, but then start the club a little bit later. And I know that's gonna be an issue for some kids that are playing sports, but I know the sports is looking at adjusting their schedule so that kids can do both. So more on that as we get closer to, to August. Um, for community engagement, I think one of the things that was loud and clear with all the focus groups that we did uh, was trying to streamline the communication to one consistent platform. So we, we were implementing Parents Square in August of two thousand twenty-five, uh, which is gonna be the one, one platform for all of our communications with families in the community. Um, Central Office Monthly Newsletter came out and we, we did the flip, we did the budget into a flip book this year, which we got some really good positive feedback on that. Um, consistently communicating our core values, pretty self-explanatory. The one thing that we'll add here is that when we're working on the AI policy with that group MIT, we did start with our core values and that's how we developed a policy that will come to you at some point this fall, once it's, um, once it's complete. Exploring our website updates was another thing that was very loud and clear during the, the strategic plan focus groups. Uh, we established a school committee posting area on the website, which is, which is great. And Michelle does that every Friday. Um, hello, Blake, our Instagram account is now on the, on the website. We do frequent focus postings on news items. And then Blake established a faculty resource site embedded in the, the website, which has been really, really good. Um, homeschool connection, we had the med field talks, we started that again. Uh, we're gonna be using Parents Square for conferences beginning in fall of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, and we made improvements to the online student registration for new families. So now students can go in, families can go in with interactive form. It's not just a PDF, they have to print out and fill out by hand, and they can do it all, um, PDF and then submit that, which was a long time coming. Uh, build awareness around translational services. One of the greatest things about Parents Square is that it translates every message that we do in over a hundred languages. So any issues that we have with families with translation is taken care of with Parents Square. In terms of our curriculum instruction assessments, um, continuing review of our curriculum alignment, um, developed a formalized curriculum review process that was completed, vertical team, ELA was concluded. Um, this summer RNG, we have social studies in ELA working on alignment. And the math vertical team has developed plans for twenty-five and twenty-six, the classroom visits and developing a common, uh, vocabulary in instructional practice across all grade levels, which has been really interesting to see elementary, middle and high get in the same room and talk about mathematics because it just, you can see the development as it goes through, but, um, I think there's a greater appreciation of what the elementary does now that we've done these vertical teams. Um, and then one thing that we started doing and collecting data, which will come to your attentions is the, um, the district homework policy. So we did an analysis of the two thousand twenty-five data, and we're gonna give that to you in the fall. So that was something that came out of our SEL task force. But we're five years out there, so it's kinda time to review, look at that and maybe make some changes needed. So we'll be bringing that to you, um, as a potential policy change in the fall. Uh, identifying timely professional development need, I'll just quickly go over some of the spring twenty-five PDs since our last presentation. Uh, we did PD on belonging, family engagement, AI, that was facilitated by MIT, literacy, de-escalation strategies, augmentative and alternative communication strategies in family engagement, uh, professional development. So those are some of the key areas that staff were looking for, and we provided that PD for, um, in the springtime. Uh, review assessment, grading and reporting practices, um, monthly meetings with the cares to refine nine and twelve practice, including policies and procedures around late work, retakes, extra credit and waiting rates was very successful, and we've got a pretty good, uh, plan in place for that. Um, evaluate and establish the pre-K to twelve multi-tiered, uh, system of support, MTSS. You guys had that presentation with Mary and Christine. And we had building-based, um, MASS, MTSS teams and then ongoing MTSS meetings that had taken place all spring in each building with, with very good success on that. Um, investigate and align pre-K to twelve SEL curriculum. So we piloted a couple of, some soft pilots, a couple of, uh, curriculum that happened, um, in, in both the middle school, high school, and then some elementary, looked at some as well. The decision was made, we go to Wayfinder, and that will be implemented across the district in the fall of two thousand twenty-five. Trainings to occur in August for elementary and then October for middle and high school. It's a really light lifting, you'll see if we do the presentation for it. It's essentially a thirty-minute, present, thirty-minute, um, lesson each week for elementary and then middle and high use it through their advisory. And it's, it spirals through the entire, uh, the entire district, so there'll be a common understanding, common language, instead of having um, five different programs at school to school. So that's really, we're really excited about that. And the teacher's got a little bit, little flavor of it at the end of the year, and they'll get more in-depth in it when we go into the training in the, in the summer and the fall. Um, streamline the student transition between grades and schools. Again, we, we tried to do some work on that. The school councils have individual meetings with eighth graders. We had incoming grade level pin nights. And then transition days have always been, uh, very, very popular with the kids. And then we're still looking at that collaborative fellows project, which we've done, we've partnered with Medfield Public Schools of BC. That's been going on for a while, and the data is collected and with the papers and development. So Christine's working with BC on that. Taking a little bit longer than we anticipated, but we should have something, I would think, by December of, of this year. And then lastly, finance facilities and personnel, um, long-term strategies for budget, um, identifying energy efficiencies. We have a solar canopy project that's starting, um, this month at, at Memorial School. And then, uh, Michael has, has brought this practice of the town and school energy contracts for greater economy to scale. He's working on that. Um, the five-year capital plan, I think it's gonna be released in the, by the town in July. Two real key things for us, uh, in addition to Dale Street is the roof projects. We have three roofs that need to be done in our schools. Uh, and we think we talked about that during the budget process, probably around nineteen million dollars to get those roofs done. And then the Schilling Field, the baseball field is in really rough shape. So we're looking at getting additional funds from the town to try to get something in place for that summer and fall, so that next spring they're playing on at least a new infield. Um, and then I'm playing on the field that's there now, which is long past its life. We did have that on the capital plan for FY twenty-seven, we were trying to bump that up a little bit, uh, to get that done. And then, of course, addressing Dale Street, which we hear about each month. We've had monthly school building committee meetings, and we submitted all the required documents and module one to MSBA. Um, collaborate with the town, establish new revenue streams. I think that's ongoing discussion, looking at fee structures and partnerships. And then, uh, developing the long-term technology, uh, the IT capital allocation for FY twenty-six, three hundred thousand, really helping us out and, and Owen does a really good job targeting the areas that are end of life that we need to have replenished, and that's what gets taken place with the capital. So a lot of stuff in there. I just did a quick highlight of everything, but please look at all of our, if you have any questions, happy to answer them, but a lot, a lot got done this year, you know, awesome team effort from everyone in the district to get this done. And our strategic plan continues to be the most star that we look at, uh, to get work done and to focus our, our, our areas each school year. So excited that we accomplish, and we're excited to get more done next year. Happy to answer questions or feedback.
I had a couple on the, the first section there, the safety of line stuff, cause, you know, that's where, where my heart lies, I guess. But what, so the connectedness check-ins, is that implementation of that? Like what is, what is that?
So that was when, um, I think there was a kind of a question that we had talked about in February, where Nat has done some of those questions at, at the middle school. So taking that, all the data on those questions and connectedness and then, uh, making sure that the kids that don't feel that connectedness, that we're doing, doing some strategies to support them in that area.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so it's, it's identifying the, the students that identify, that self-identify that they may not be as connected to an adult in the school, and then how we definitely make sure that, that takes place and that happens.
Right, and so is that, uh, is that like, uh, cause that goes, my next question, when you, you highlighted, um, something else. Voice engagement. Oh, the student council survey.
Yeah.
So for like the connecting of chess and, and the student council survey, are we like close to a hundred percent participate, like, are those things, are all kids doing that? Cause like
Yeah, that's.
The obvious fear, right, is a middle school kid.
Definitely not all doing it.
Yeah.
Checking with it.
I guess I'd just like to know what the numbers are-ish, cause if it's sixty, I think, or something that's important, like, if I'm a kid opting out of that, I might not feel connected. So I just, I push a little bit on.
Yeah.
On anything where we're getting engagement for kids, um, like what is the participation? Cause you said there were some great takeaways, but uh, we can't make all the kids do that, but I just love for that number, to know that number and for probably to be higher than it probably is.
So I'll get the connectedness one for Blake, and then the student council one with the high school for sure.
Yeah.
It's not anonymous of the issue.
Yeah.
That's why I know.
Yeah, I think that's.
Those would never take it.
That, that's probably part of it.
Like, right, so I, so I wonder if there's a way that we can make them feel more comfortable, that it's really not, we're looking at individuals, I gotta come back to you and say like, what you wrote.
Yeah.
You know, cause I think that in some of their.
It's anonymous and there's an issue we can't address.
Again, that's. No, I think it's more understanding that it's not anonymous, but we're really not using this data to like tell your teacher you said, like, I like you.
Right, right.
You know, I think it, like, right, to make sure they understand, even though it's not anonymous, like, we're not booking it.
Like, how is it presented?
Yes, yes, cause I think there's a fear, like, oh, I say something and like.
Yeah, someone could.
Yeah.
Which like, it not, like, it's bad stuff. It's just like, I don't want like, Mr. Bond knowing that I don't like this class or something.
Right.
So I think it's maybe how we present it to even increase the number.
That's fair.
Yeah, cause I guess. Sorry, I'm just gonna, one more.
Yeah, yeah, no, that was just a point to that.
It's the same, it's the same, like, vein kind of thing, when we talk about like Wayfinder in the high school and to, like, I understand to the thousands of listeners out there that don't work at high schools, I, I want them, like, it's not just the surveys, right? It's like the advisories and everything. So I also, like, the Wayfinder, it says we'll be doing a training in the fall for our teachers, right? Which obviously is tough. It happens all the time in schools, but, but so what will the expectation then be? Will, will it be like when the teachers have their PD on this in the fall? Is the idea that they are implementing Wayfinder, uh, after that? Or is it like twenty steps?
No, right after that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause again, I'm just here for eyes on our kids and belonging and safeness and that stuff. And so like, I, I know the survey's on a hundred percent. I'd like to see the numbers, cause I'm curious. Um, but I think, um, teachers' buy-ins to advisory in my experience in other districts that I worked at are very different.
Yeah.
Um, so I just wanna make sure kids are getting the same experience in our advisories. I think Wayfinder, the, the, the same language the whole way is a good thing. But I just wanna know how we're holding the teachers accountable, that kids aren't. Uh, and there's, obviously, there should be time and space in advisory for kids to chill, right? And talk to each other, build relationships with each other, but I just wanna make sure it's a, um, the same experience for all our kids.
So right now, advisory is the same experience for all kids because if, if they get a, um, a topic that with all the materials that go with it for each advisory. So the assistant principals, principals and councils work together on that. In fact, they do some R and D on some of that to get that together. So what's happening now is that and, and it's all based on a strategic plan and what we find in, in the surveys and all that, but this will allow it to kind of build on each other. So the advisory of sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, they're gonna be building on each other with different topics.
Right.
And then high school, they'll be building on that. So the first year, there's not, they're not gonna have that, you know, the three or four years prior to that. So it's gonna be important topics, but it's, I don't wanna say it's plug and play for the teachers, but it's almost plug and play for the teachers. Like, it's really set up for them so that they have um, the pacing of it, what to be, what's gonna be covered, the materials that go with it, it's, it's pretty good. It's, and that's why it's one of the few programs that you read about that was actually started at the high school and worked down versus most places, and most programs are elementary and go up.
Yeah.
Wayfinder started as a high school program for advisory. And they saw the success, they brought it down to middle school, and they brought it down to elementary. So it's a really good program. Uh, but it'll be considered, that was the, the goal of this, is not only to provide kids with the, the information that they need, but also to provide consistency among all twelve grades. I think that's what it will do. Advisory is a little, obviously a little bit different than what's gonna happen to the elementary, where they do it every single week at a certain time, you know? Advisory is not as often as we would have a no hundred.
How often advisory and how are the groupings?
So the groupings are done, um, typically by grade level. And, uh, it, it, it's every, sometimes every eight days, it could be every sixteen days, depending on the schedule. It's a. And uh it, it, it's every, sometimes every eight days, it could be every sixteen days, depending on the schedule. It's a rotating schedule now, which is due last year. Um but kids are put in advisory and they stay in that same advisory the entire year, which we think is pretty effective. Uh is it, is there anything on advisory you want to add or?
No, yeah, it's just one of the flexes.
Yeah, one of the flexes, yeah. Sure takes one of the flexes away, but uh which I think it's some, sometimes some kids don't like that, but I think. The content that takes place in advisory is worth doing that for, for sure.
Doesn't the high school, right? The middle school needs to.
They do.
They do it every day. You have advisory every day and it's at the, unless. Middle school's changing, but it's the same.
And then going off of your question about, I'm sorry, I don't remember the, what the word was of what happens in the middle school that. Those, that questionnaire. What now? And then the differences in student council that's in the height, like. The sort of questions on belonging connectedness are through the student council, like I, I'm unclear on that.
Yeah, so the counselors in, in administration do the connectedness more. And that's more at a faculty meeting with students' names and who's connected to that kid and they go through the entire student body and do that.
Gotcha.
Whereas the high school one is more student-driven, but they, they do it through the, the s- school council, the student council. But I think the participation percent is a good data point, uh for sure.
I think again, uh we're, this is completing here too.
Yes.
Yeah, so impressive amount of work to get this once again. So thank you to you and your team. Um my question would be more aligned, if you look at the dashboard, because we're always going to come back here, right? Because that's.
We have to update it.
Correct. So that's something that'll be done this summer. And then my next question would be knowing that we're heading into year three, which is going to be kind of the midpoint. Um I guess I would be interested as we evaluate and I recognize. You know, you and your leadership team will be in August to kind of decide what's going to be happening next year.
Right.
I feel like next year would be the year we would start to see if anything wasn't going to be able to be completed by the end of the five year.
I would think so.
So that would be, I think, another interesting thing to start to talk about. We recognize some things aren't going to hit the mark given the amount of time that we have left. I think that would be something to just note and.
No, I think that's a good point.
And talk about.
Dale Street being warm.
And I think it's, I mean, just you can't beat it. Like when you plan something, you know, three years later, there could be other things that need to take priority that you should sort of like. Move up and sort of deprioritize just because you only have so much time.
Yeah.
To do stuff, so.
Right, but that would be the place to look.
Yes, exactly. I think to look at that.
Agreed, yeah. That'd be one of the questions I'm looking to discuss in August, for sure.
Do you guys have any surprises this year in regards to where you started last summer in August to where you finished in June?
I would think that some of the D E I stuff has been really positive and. I think the amount of participation has been really strong at each building. And there's always that core group that does what they do. I mean, they, they believe in it, they want to do it, but I think more people joined in. So that's been really positive. Uh to see that, even though it's, you know, it's kind of a. Difficult topic that we're dealing with these days, right? Uh I think the belonging piece is what we want to call it and what we, what we think it is. And then all that encompasses everything around that. So that's been really good. Um I think the, the threat assessment work has been. Which I think is very super important to do. Um I think we were a little more busy with that than we thought we were going to be. Um so that's been interesting and, and having to work closely with Dylan on that. Uh with the police department and Mary's been coordinating that. So she's been kind of the liaison with the district and police department. Um I think that relationship is super strong right now based on some of the work that we did this school year. That's been great. Um school start time stuff, I think. I guess the surprise that we all had there is I think, you know, Diana mentioned in the last meeting. We've tried to communicate this as much as possible and, and people still, oh, sorry, we're still doing that. Um it, people work here too, not just people outside the school. So um I think that's, some of that has been interesting. Uh I think everyone understands it now, but up until, you know, about a month ago, there was still some questions about that. Uh. You know, I think. It's probably the biggest one. They have a lot of work done in curriculum this year too, which has been really good, having those conversations where it's uh, it's so important to have those. Oracle conversations of K to twelve, because. K is no twelve does. Twelve is no K does. And it's nice that everyone understands kind of what, everyone fits in together. It's not more difficult, it's just different, right? So the fact that you have those conversations, when people can see what happens in an elementary classroom and what happens in a high school classroom and they're not used to that. Pretty powerful to have those conversations once you've seen that. High school peoples are amazed that the three ring circus, that teachers can do it elementary and I think elementary are just. So impressed with the, what our kids know and the, and the content and the amount of work that they did. So I think it's, it's really good for both. Elementary and secondary to see what you, which you, each other does, you know? That's been really good to see. So, yeah, a lot of good stuff going on. I mean, I think it's uh. You got me thinking about that because I, I wasn't thinking about August being that point of. What things aren't going to get done. I never really think about that, but I think we need to do that.
I mean, I hope that everything gets done, but I think we do recognize that they come up and priorities change and that is. Something we said at the beginning, we knew that was going to be thing. And some of these things also are going to be ongoing, right? But I think we are in a place where some of the stuff might not hit the completion.
Right.
At the five-year mark. And again, that's okay, but I think understanding what that gives and takes are, is something for everybody to understand. The fellowship paper that you mentioned around the transition from eight to nine.
Best thing of all forever.
Like, how long are you anticipating this paper being and what is the end goal of it?
Well, I think. It was just some issues with um with B C and the partnership. Um professors on sabbatical, those kinds of things, so this took a little bit longer. There's a lot of data on there and then it was some doc students working on it with, with a professor. Uh I think the end goal is really to kind of see what do people really think about kids, parents? What they really think about the transition from eighth to ninth grade and get a perspective from them. And then back it up with literature or not back it up, but just get a, you know, backing literature on there to see. I think that's, that's the goal of it. Um it's been hanging out there for a bit though, for sure.
So the data was collected from students and families.
It was.
How, I, I guess, since it's been hanging on there, what, what grade are the current students in that the data was collected from? Like, you know, everybody.
So it was. Data was collected probably are going to be. Either sophomores or juniors.
Okay.
Probably sophomores, I guess so.
Sophomores is the best.
So it, well, it seems a long time.
Yeah, well, it is, but I mean, it's not.
So it was, you know, the focus groups, surveys, focus groups of parents. I mean, the data piles like this that, you know, that Christine had, had done with B C. So. Uh we should be getting something this fall. And get a, a flavor of what the findings are and what people really think about what that transition looks like. I think that was, we're just trying to get beyond anecdotal information, right? Just trying to get a real sense of what it's, it's like in the transition. Beyond everyone just complaining about biology, right?
Um, anything else on the strategic plan? Any other questions or comments?
Okay.
So September will bring it back to a bunch of other stuff and you guys tell us what you want us to work on and we'll go from there.
On any other items to post then? Um next up we have uh old business draft policy F J. Evolutions and improved school or school sites by non-district parties. Uh this is our second reading, potential vote. Um does anybody have any thoughts or feedback on the policy?
No.
We feel ready for a vote?
True, I think so.
Uh before we move to a vote, is there any comment, quick comment?
Uh, hold on one second.
I assume then someone will raise their hand.
Yeah.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept draft policy F J as stated.
You made the motion, so I can just second the motion? So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, alright, the motion carries.
Alright, we'll get that to M C, M C and get it back up there.
Okay, thank you. Um informational items, um Dr. Morrison, you have the enrollment spreadsheet.
Right, so this is the end of the, end of the enrollment on June first. You'll see that we, we started the year on September first with a total enrollment in two thousand four hundred ninety-six. And we ended with two thousand four ninety-five and there's all different numbers in between where we've added kids, we lose kids, we get that kids back. It's. So there's always changes that happen within the district, but you, you'll see that uh we do have some large classes coming up in the lower grades. If you take a look at some of the numbers there, uh tho- that small class, which is our current tenth grade. Is the last little small class coming through. If you remember years and years ago when they were in elementary, we were looking at reducing staff at the middle school, but then. Decided not to. Uh that's the last group going through. So we'll, we'll be back up to. You know, mid one nineties to over two hundred uh. Exception of just next year's fifth grade, but uh certainly a lot of kids coming in those. Uh we have that large class coming in kindergarten in twenty seven. So we'll see if that materializes, but uh. It's typical, these are more typical numbers around, you know, one ninety to two hundred, two hundred plus.
Yeah, any questions on that? Alright, um my only other informational item. Uh so the last two summers we've met either like in July or really close to July. One time we had to meet on Will's birthday. I feel like right now we don't have any reason to meet in July. So as I should officially say, we are. Not doing anything in July and everyone feel free to take a little bit of a break. So July, we're off.
One time I was in Maine for one fall.
Yeah.
During the summer.
Maybe that's.
We're all over things.
Um okay, so right now we will adjourn our regular meeting. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn meeting.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um why don't we? Let's hear thirteen minutes ago.
We wanted.
You guys want to take our fifteen minute dinner now and then we can start with Steve just a few minutes earlier than I said originally?
Yeah.
Yeah. Fifteen minute dinner break.
Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Hillary. Welcome, Steve.
Hey Steve.
Gloria, can you close the Zoom? Um, we're just gonna take a brief dinner break and then we'll, or are you going?
No, we're not. We have to turn the table, so it's a little bit.
No, so can you close that?
Okay.
Uh and then we can get hooked up on here.
Thank you.
Um but conceptually, I, that's what I'm saying. So is this, is this recording on right now? Oh, but we ended the meeting, so I guess that has to air. Yeah, stop and to record. Like when the meeting ends, we shut off the recording.
Okay.
I'm sorry, recording, yeah.
Can you start recording and can you stop?
Right, but I thought, I thought for reporting, no, we weren't letting people join. It was just going to be recorded and sent out.
Yeah. We're just recording on that.
Right, my point is. Yes, but my, so my point is it goes in close.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
It's not, is my point. So it's still, it's still hearing us. So I'm saying we should close out the Zoom. Right? No, we don't, people aren't, but we're not watching the workshop for sending out after.
Right, so this, the hour is not going to be recording anything. We all should be recording the workshop.
But it, but it should be recording, not like live streaming. Those are different things, yes. And the owl live stream or. No, the owl and live stream, what we want it to do is only record. So we want to shut it off from live stream. Like Matt shouldn't be able to be at his house to fall in and watch our workshop, I thought, because I thought it was either in person and we'll set up the recording after.
I would have been.